Let's call the Thursday, December 1st work session for a council to order. Andrew Brown, you can call it all.
Absolutely. Council President Fred Bush.
Here.
Council Vice President Michelle Panopoulos.
Here.
Council Member Barbara Fortner.
Here.
Council Member Rob McGrady.
Here.
Council Member Cindy Records.
Here.
Council Member Bob Weisberg. Council Member Ira Winston.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
I actually wonder, would you say Bob is or isn't it? Okay.
So anyone wish to offer changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
So, I have no comments for tonight. Mayor Deutsch, your comments?
The only thing I want to talk about for a moment is on Sunday, we have our annual Dickens Fest in downtown Norbert, which is a very exciting thing that so many volunteers, particularly Ed Ridgeway, worked super hard on. It goes from 12 to 4. Streets will be closed from approximately 10:30 a.m. till about 5:15 p.m. We can always use more volunteers if you can volunteer. Please reach out to Ed. We need volunteers for setup during the event and for cleanup. Takes many hands and if you volunteer, you really enjoy yourself even more because it's a way to interact with your friends and neighbors and it's a way to be part of the magic. So, I would encourage people to jump in and everybody support your local shops and have a great time. That's it.
Excellent. All right. Let's move on to public comments. Everybody in the room who wants to drop a public comment? See if you have one online.
All right, so, anyone from the public on Zoom who wishes to make public comment, please use the raise hand function or literally raise your hand and I'll call on you and you'll be able to unmute it. All right, see no public comment online?
Let's move on to our first presentation item, which is status update for the Norbert Avenue Bridge. We have Mr. Mark here from Pinoni.
Hello. Nice to see you all again. You may recall, I came here late summer, early fall. Said what the steps were to get here and was hoping to be here in December, saying we're all on schedule to let the project in December. We're not. But, I will say that we've made tremendous progress since that meeting. Jen, who I know you've met, and I meet on a weekly basis to make sure we have dedicated the resources necessary to the project and we have kept our part of the schedule throughout the pieces we need to let the project. We had, one, we just got this week that was four weeks later than we assumed we would get. Basically, there were a couple of PennDOT submissions we made on October 7th. The first one, which is the DM3 submission, we got back on October 20th. That was faster than we anticipated. The second one was the constructibility review. We assumed four weeks of review, but we just got it back on Tuesday. So that was behind schedule in our getting it. I should point out, we have bi-weekly meetings with Samantha and the PennDOT project management team to stay on top of PennDOT when these things start slipping the schedule. So Samantha, on a bi-weekly basis emphasizes to PennDOT the importance of this project to the borough. So does Pinoni, but Pinoni cannot review our plans for PennDOT. So that's still, that was in their report. We got it back Tuesday. Comments are relatively minor. So that shouldn't hold us up any further. The other piece that we're missing is the Amtrak submission. We have submitted to Amtrak also in October. We have not heard back yet. We have followed up in November. Jen actually has a friend who works at engineering at Amtrak and asked, are we talking to the wrong person here? And said, no, no, you are talking to the right person. They're just not getting us the clearance and the feedback we need from them. So we are continuing to push on Amtrak on a couple different sides to get what we need from them to wrap this up. And we will continue to do so. Samantha and I have talked about other strategies when it, if it comes to that, to have other people reach out to Amtrak. We will continue to reach out, but we need that feedback and we need their participation in wrapping up this project. One of the other pieces that was missing, we just got approval from the Montgomery County Soil Conservation on Tuesday. That's for any construction project, you need to show your, got a good soil erosion control plan in place. We just got that on Tuesday, so that is no longer an issue. Like I said, Pinoni has been staffing the project appropriately since we met. We've got our final design plans done in a PennDOT. I think it will be tweaked depending on some of the stuff we hear from Amtrak, but but we're basically inches from the finish line, I think. I can confidently say we have done everything we can do to keep moving it and we will continue to do so until we're at the finish line. But we do need some, some help here. That's, that's where we're at.
Do you have any more to add?
I think what Jim said is pretty accurate about where we're at.
Are there, are there any ways we can help? Any ways the council or the mayor or public representatives can help?
Yeah, we've, Samantha and I have talked about that. For example, the constructibility review is from PennDOT to state agency. I'm sure we could have gotten a little faster with Representative Daley's office making a phone call. Would the reviewers then review it with an ax to grind or not? So that's the risk we're weighing, right? So we got the review letter. It's pretty mild. We have it now and we can act on it. But those are the conversations we're having. What other avenues are there? Now, Amtrak's a federal agency. I guess that will be.
House Rep. Mary Gay Scanlon.
So I told the. Well, yeah, I think as Jim mentioned, it's the, the timing of when you make that move is, is kind of important here. And it's certainly an option that is not off the table by any means, but I think it's something that Jim and I have talked about that, you know, if they, if what we're doing, the avenues on the staff level that he and I are pursuing don't get this review done that we need, then yeah, then we're absolutely going to have to escalate it. I may have, I forget who on council I heard this story from and then confirmed it in a newspaper article, but I told Jim the story about Bob Casey on the bridge back in like 2016. And you know, I've kind of half joked with Jim that at some point we'll have to remind Senator Casey's office about his visit to the Norbert that bridge.
The irony is, you know, Amtrak has a fair amount of money right now and Pinoni, Ansepta, and some other organizations have lost staff to Amtrak because they're hiring. I would hope that would result in faster reviews and turnaround, but haven't seen that.
So, I read in one of the pieces of correspondence, an idea that someone had about sort of overlapping two processes that normally are, have to happen one after the other. But that somehow sometimes PennDOT does on their own project as opposed to other people's projects?
Yeah, we've talked about that. So, the, the final deliverable from Pinoni is the PSNE. That is short for plans, specs, and estimates. It has happened before, where that has happened before some of the other PennDOT reviews are finalized. I think we're pretty much done with the PennDOT reviews. I mean, we'll have to submit the constructibility response back. Some of the comments in it were like, well, what's the Amtrak schedule? So, our response won't be complete. So that might overlap a little.
So what you're basically saying is that since that memo, we've got everything we needed from PennDOT, therefore now Amtrak is like fully the problem?
Yeah, and PennDOT has been pretty explicit that they're not going to, they're not going to finalize the PSNE without Amtrak's T's crossed N's dot.
Thanks for being here. So, when, once Amtrak gives back feedback or whatever thing it is that Amtrak is giving, I guess it's the final bridge design, that's the only place I see it right here, is that correct? I mean, see, let's see a final bridge design. Oh no, that's late. November, that can't, oh, must, well, which, what is it? I'll just ask you, you're here. What is Amtrak giving back?
There's a form that any other participant in a PennDOT project has to provide if their facilities are interacting with the PennDOT facilities. It could be gas, it could be Pico. Amtrak is a big one, right? Where they need to say, we have scheduled a part of the work we need to do. This is when it's scheduled, this is what we need to finalize it. But it's basically a form, there's a lot of, a lot goes into that form, but for PennDOT to say, okay, we know exactly what Amtrak expects, what Amtrak's going to do and.
So it's not, Amtrak isn't giving us feedback on it and we've got with our design or Pinoni's plans. Amtrak is giving PennDOT basically scheduling for. I mean, they have to work out scheduling of things, is that accurate?
That's largely correct. We have given them our final design. You know, there are some attachments to the bridge, so for the catenary attaches to the bridge in there, welcome to, they have reviewed our submissions earlier, so we have their feedback, but if they have additional feedback, we can tweak our plans still to accommodate them. I think we're good as far as they're concerned. It's really about the work they need to schedule and how that impacts the overall project.
So, just where I'm going with these questions, I'm trying to figure out, once Amtrak does this thing that they're sitting on.
Yes.
Is there a risk of further delays due to something that they've raised in terms of a schedule, like some issue or something?
Absolutely, absolutely, Amtrak.
It's not like, once they do it, we're like, okay, great.
Some of the work Amtrak, some of the construction, Amtrak has to schedule and do themselves. You know, if they say it's ready to go, it's ready to go. If they say it's not, it's not. Like, we really need to know where they are as far as their effort to get that scheduled.
So, could that hold up our ability, whatever Amtrak comes back with, when they fill out this form, could that actually hold up approval of the PSNE or just?
I don't think it would hold up approval of the PSNE, right?
It would push the process, construction, scheduling, construction, things on the project. Okay, well, we can still go out the line.
I don't, I don't like talking in hypotheticals, but, but I'm going to here for a moment, right? If Amtrak says, we're ready to go in April and we bid the project and our contractor's ready to go in April, great. If Amtrak says, we're not going to start until July, could we still bid the project knowing that the Amtrak work isn't going to start till July, so the contractor can be on board and get their submittals done and order whatever the materials are they need? Like, I think there's some flexibility there. If Amtrak comes back and say, yeah, we'll be ready to go in 2025, I don't think we're going to let the project, but that's a very critical piece of information.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what I call, you know, Mary Gay Scanlon and Bob Casey, absolutely.
Yeah, is, I wanted to ask, is, is it unusual to have the catenary attached to the bridge or is that just common, like along the main line? Do you know? I mean, it is.
Pretty common.
Oh, okay. So it's not as if our bridge is especially complex compared to the other bridges on this lawn? No, okay.
I mean, often, bridges are never, no offense, but in my opinion, bridges are never fun projects.
Right, but I mean, there's nothing, there's no special challenge here that Amtrak has to surmount.
It's a, yeah, so attaching, catenary has to get past the bridge, right? Catenary design goes out beyond that to the catenary towers, like there's other pieces that Amtrak wants to do themselves. So I'm hesitant to say this is simple. From our perspective, it's pretty simple, right? But I'm hesitant to say from their perspective, it's simple.
Has there been any contact with Amtrak? Have we had anything back from them at all?
Yes.
So what are they saying?
For previous submissions, we.
No, I mean, like now, like in the last few months, have we heard anything from them directly?
Yeah, not since October. So we submitted this stuff in October. We followed up last month, followed up.
And they just didn't answer?
We have not heard back.
Is there like, is that like an email or is there someone you can call to like?
That's exact, yeah, that's exact sort of challenge.
I know, I'm oversimplifying and, you know.
That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing.
But you have not succeeded in not getting like a status from them?
Exactly, yeah. It's a fair question, but yeah, that's, that's the exact challenge.
Is, is it unusual not to hear from them or is this kind of part of, this is kind of what other?
Do you want me to answer that question? I mean, I guess I'll say, I mean, I enjoy working in local government. I mean, I am a bureaucrat by definition, but part of why I enjoy local government is even though people feel we respond slowly to things, we respond much faster than the state or federal governments. I'm sure everyone's experienced doing anything, you have to interact with the state or federal government.
I'll editorialize a little bit, I try to avoid it, but like, Amtrak's mission is to move trains. If there's something else that they have to deal with that isn't moving trains, it's not as big a priority, right? Same with Conrail. Like, we have projects that cross Conrail facilities or do the Conrail facilities. Can you indulge me for a little story here? I, I worked on the, you know, Penn Park, it's down near the 30th Street Station. It was all postal ground. I, I was involved in a very minor way with that very early on, had a meeting with Amtrak because they had a signal loop that kind of came through the park. And at that meeting, we sat down, the guy from Amtrak said, "I don't know why we're here and I don't know what you want, but the answer is no." I'm not saying that's where we're at here, but.
Yeah, but I mean, the difference there is Penn started pulling strings.
Right.
You know, pretty quick.
Well, what we wanted was pretty minor too. We will pay to move your stuff to a place that's more convenient for you. We got there. We'll get there. I am confident we will get there. Though there are things that are out of our control, scheduled lines, which is frustrating.
All right. So, you have more questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Joe.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
We look forward to hearing, once we move past all these.
Be here for the bid opening soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a discussion of green building. And we have, uh, Brent, you're the planning commission here. Yeah, so we have Sid in front of us.
Good idea. I could tell you stories without getting permission, but Ansepta, I don't know. And, and amazing stories, if you ever want to go out, I could hear.
Jen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the ability to unmute if you want. I'm not, I'm not, I don't know if you have a plan on saying things to her as well, but I just want to give you that option in case you need it.
There you go, Jen.
Okay.
Before I start, I'd like to acknowledge Jen here on the big screen as here too, because there's a lot of technical aspects of this, she knows a lot more about than I do, so she may be in a better position to answer questions. We're working on a number of main matters at the planning commission now, but the one I asked to speak about tonight is the green zoning recommendations that we forwarded you. The other, the other topics, I think we could discuss in subsequent meetings. And this is a, a topic we've looked at for several years now. Most recently picked it up this summer at Borough Council's request. Question from Borough Council was, could be, as planning commission, look at a way to link bonus provisions, particularly in the 5A district, for construction approaches or building approaches that involve sustainable design, green architecture, things like that. So that's the charge I'm here to report on you, report to you again about. Since I saw you last, we've continued to work with my colleagues in the planning commission to find a approach to this that we could all confidently support. Some of the earlier ideas we floated did not really have full consensus at the planning commission and so we, we kept working at it. And as you might have seen in the letter we sent after our November meeting, what we've arrived at is a strategy that would focus on incorporating green building provisions into our conditional use processes rather than a zoning bonus process. So I'd like to, I wanted to explain that, how we think this can work. Whenever we talk about zoning, there's always two halves of zoning. One half is what are the rules and where do they apply? The spatial aspect to it and a kind of, you know, the rules aspect of it. So, in short, the, the rules aspect of it where we are proposing are to focus on maximizing energy efficiency in new construction and on zeroing out carbon usage in new construction. We had originally discussed other ideas about construction processes, local sourcing of materials and so forth, but we're not confident, even after working hard with the borough staff, that A, that that could be managed well and B, that because of the rate of change in how these things work in the construction industry, that we could even keep up with it in our code. Following environmental advisory commission's advice and actually comments from council last time I was here, that the big thing to focus on is carbon neutrality. And for those goals in that regard, net zero, I forget the exact phrase you used, that's what we felt was the priority. So, the rules are, would apply, in, in the situations where this would apply, we would require buildings to achieve a higher standard of energy efficiency than our current building codes allow by using other metrics, other, other codes that do exist, but we're not allowed to require as a borough. And secondly, to require that, that all new construction not have any hookups for fossil fuels, no gas, no oil, all electric, that they, to the extent possible, given their sighting, generate renewable energy on site, that whatever they can't generate themselves, that they acquire renewable energy through the means we can all acquire renewable energy in our electric bills. And once the borough gets its community aggregation grid participation up and running, that they participate in that. So those are really the asks that would be part of the green building program and we're confident that those could be, that the effort that would be required to manage those is worth the outcomes that we would get. So that's the what. The other question is the where. Quite frankly, the, there was strong opinion from several planning commissioner members that a bonus approach is not appropriate for Norbert. The bonus being if you do certain things, we will give you something extra, like extra density. The reasoning for that was that when we created the Form Based Code, we thought long and hard about what the capacity of the borough would be to accept new development. For the most part, we've stuck with that. We, we've imagined, you know, there's opportunities for infill, but by and large, the contours of what the zoning code allows in terms of the intensity development is pretty much similar to what it allowed when we passed it, aside from where we reduced the density in, in the 5A district. As the planning commissioners felt that trying to go above those targets or giving the sense that we were trading density for something else wasn't, wasn't appropriate. So I really couldn't get consensus from the planning commission around that idea. So instead, we looked at where these kinds of provisions would probably be make the most, have the most impact practically and work most practically, and that's with our larger developments. And a lot of our larger developments do need to go through some sort of conditional use process. All apartment buildings have to go through a conditional use process. A lot of the civic buildings that have been converted like churches have to go through a conditional use process. So we, we, we thought that rather than creating a bonus system, adding green building requirements to the conditional uses we already allow and the ones that we anticipate allowing through other things we're working on, would capture most of the buildings where green, green billing provisions would have the most impact. So there's a chart in the letter that I wrote to you, which explains what kinds of development this would apply to, to the conditional use process. It's largely apartment buildings, which are about 3A, 3C, 4A, 4B, 5A, the proposed apartment buildings and 5B, when there are multiple buildings on a lot, that would be a larger scale development that has to be on a building on a lot. So that's our larger scale development for the most part. The second place where we believe this could be implemented is for accessory dwelling units, which as you know, is something new that we just permitted this year. It does actually take up the density a little bit. It does not seem difficult to say that if you are building or converting something into an accessory dwelling unit, that it should follow the same rules, higher degree of energy efficiency and all electric and to the extent possible, on-site renewable and so forth. And so, this could simply be conferred with the solicitor and this could, this could actually be incorporated into the basic rules for, as a right development. He has a reason why he thinks that will work and so we, that's his job, we take his word in. So it can be incorporated to the basic rules for any accessory dwelling. The third place we think this could be implemented is with all other construction, but not through a zone. Through the, through the mechanism we've seen in other communities, which is a reduction in building permit fees. So if you're building a new house and you agree to need a higher energy efficiency standard, if you agree to the renewable energy requirements, you would receive a reduction in your permits, which is really the model that was brought to us several years ago. And it really does seem practical at the single-family household or the twin, because these other provisions that get into zoning and reviews and hearings just seem to be overkill for someone who just wants to do this in a house. So that is, that is, that is the where. It could apply almost anywhere, but in different ways. Houses voluntarily get a building permit reduction, ADUs completely required, larger constructions to conditional use process. So that's how we would propose that it apply. So that's the basic contours of this. And I, and I, the, the planning commission has unanimously endorsed this, that's our approach for the borough, that meets the sustainability goals of the borough, but also reflects the practicalities of administration, construction and so forth. And so that's what we've brought to you for your consideration. So I'll stop there to see if there's any questions.
Thank you, thank you Todd and Jen and Pliny. So I just want to ask, so how does it work with conditional use? So I just want to ask, so how does it work with conditional use? As soon as a project, a larger project goes into a conditional use process, then they automatically have to abide by these rules? Or is it part of a negotiation?
They would have to abide by these rules. So the way conditional use works is, in the way the zoning works, a conditional use is a use, and use has a broad, is construed broadly in the sense it could be an actual use, or it could be some other feature like a density or some other aspect of development. This development, these kinds of developments can be approved only if they meet certain conditions, which go above and beyond the zoning code. And these conditions are enumerated in the zoning code. And the process is a little different, because in addition to the regular preliminary plan and final plan review, there also has to be a public hearing, which can be conducted by council or by an independent hearing authority. So there's a public hearing. And then the code outlines a range of conditions that must be met in order for that development to be approved. So, in our code, we have numerous conditional use processes for different kinds of development. In our civic institutional buildings, our churches, for example, those can be converted to non-church uses by conditional use if the architectural features are preserved, for example. The conditional uses, some of them apply to anything that's conditional use, and some are specific to specific conditional uses. So it's a way of adding additional requirements to certain kinds of developments. Borough Council can also request other conditions as well in those processes that get negotiated. But these would be written in the code as things you have to do in order to get your conditional use approval for those developments.
Well, as you said, council's heard, discussed various forms of this proposal all the time, Planning Commission's worked out, we're going to work with the general comments.
And I just have one clarification, which I think I know the answer to, but I'll ask anyway. This is for new ADUs, not like for an existing ADU, right?
Well, it would be for anything, I guess, that seeks a permit for an ADU from here on out.
So in other words, if I have like cottage next to my house already, and I want to like declare it to be an ADU, I mean, it's there already?
Right.
I would have to like change the, and it's somehow powered by, you know?
Well, those aren't legal, right? So your cottage you have next to your house is probably not legal.
Well, it's legal, but you can't live in there.
Well, I don't know. Would that be grandfathered?
That may sort of my question. I think the answer would be that, first, it's more research, could question. And the question is probably the solicitor needs to wait a little bit. But our intent would be that yes, they'd have to, they'd have to convert over to, because it's a small building, it shouldn't be a big building, convert to all-electric. Being electric's over there.
I mean, it probably already is electric, because who's going to like run gas to what was formerly a garage?
I don't know, but the intent would be that if someone's saying, "We're converting it," it would apply in that situation. A tiny little nuance is, because we don't think this is that challenging in an existing building, if you're doing it for an ADU, the main unit would also have to as well.
And then, I guess, my other question, which I think I also ask all the time, is if someone like agrees to all of this, including like buying renewable energy, right? Because I mean, like, once you convert it to electric, it's kind of a pain in the neck to convert it back to gas. But the renewable energy, like a new owner could switch that, like get up, you know, just like.
Anyone could, like I could.
Like a web form, right? Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I guess that becomes a deed restriction, is that what?
Samantha, are you able to speak to that?
So that was, yeah, that was the biggest question honestly that I had and wanted to talk through with staff. And so, as Todd mentioned, there was a meeting where myself, Borough Engineer, you know, our code and zoning officer, I'm the solicitor, as well as the EAC and the Planning Commission, and our council president, talked through, that was probably the biggest question I wanted to get answered at that meeting. And the solicitor, again, he would be able to word it, but the short version is, the solicitor outlined for us procedures for enforcement the borough would be able to pursue in order to ensure that we would have avenues, ensure properties continue to comply with the provisions of the green building regulations.
But is that even publicly available information who's someone's buying?
I think if it's a condition, then it can be. I mean, if it's a condition.
I guess they have to provide proof.
Yeah, exactly.
Otherwise, you can't use the building for that purpose. So even after that, you've got conditions.
Okay, enough.
See, the, I believe solicitors thought there were two possible ways to monitor that. One was at the time of sale, when you know the CFO needs to be, the building needs to be re-inspected. But also, in the building maintenance code, which you are revising, and we'll have more ability to monitor what happens in buildings and enforce codes, that would be another mechanism for, you know, inspection, would be through that code.
Yeah, as part of the annual rental inspection we're working on and update unit program we're working on.
Well, you know, we're specifically asking them to join our program, so once our program is done, who's on?
Well, that would be easier, I agree.
So we want to run that well, also.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to put the point at this.
I think, if I remember correctly, just to add a bit, that the change of occupancy was favored because it was less onerous than having like an annual, you know, checkup to see if you were still using renewable energy or not. And, you know, part of the idea behind all of this change is not to make it onerous, but to make it sort of seamless. For example, and not to burden anybody with extra paperwork and inspections and stuff like that. And, you know, I think just, that's one of the virtues of the community choice segregation is that it is an opt-out program, where it automatically just transitions to renewable. I don't want to go off on a tangent about that, but just to illustrate the point of, you know, trying to make this not burdensome.
Thanks. All right, that's good.
So it sounds then like it's fine for myself and Todd to work with the borough's solicitor to craft an ordinance for council's consideration?
Yeah, and I think we're going to get more discussion, that Planning Commission's still working on some of the exact details of which zoning or which, you know, you're going to come back to us next month, I know, Todd.
Right. Well, that's the where, right? So, the what, we could actually begin drafting that code, and then it could just be plugged in as we develop. You know, we'll be discussing new conditional use situations for 5A and 5B, right? So, we can be working on this while we're discussing that, and when those, if and when those are ready, then what we're working on can be plugged right in. That language could be a cross-reference into the new conditional use processes. So my, I think, if I'm following your suggestion, is we get to work on that language, so we have it ready, and then council can bundle it to an ordinance whenever council wishes, but at least the language is ready.
Yeah, I'll say now, we still keep it moving while, you know, while we're working on the details, while the, you know, the other zoning updates.
Brad?
Yes, Barbara.
I was just reminded, when you mentioned some other things that the Planning Commission was going to be looking into around this, of a note I made. Todd, it mentions in your letter that there's this, you're working on a special exemption process to avoid, I love this, dimensional conflicts with the zoning code for people seeking to install green building infrastructure like solar panels. And I was wondering if that, how far away is that going to be to have that figured out and in the code then? Because I know there are some people in the community who are concerned, I may not be allowed to put solar panels on my roof because it doesn't comply, it wouldn't comply anymore with the pitch requirement, or it's stuff that I honestly don't ever want to have to understand. And I'm just wondering how soon we'll be able to have that changed so that people don't have that worry anymore, and they can go ahead and do solar panels when they're ready to.
We're continuing to work on that. If you listen to the last Planning Commission meeting, you'll see that there are, there's still a lot of consensus around how to approach that.
Okay.
I will be meeting with some of my commissioners Saturday to feel about a little bit more about some possible solutions. So we haven't dropped it, but it's been a topic that's been hard to get a lot of agreement around, I shall say.
Thank you for working on that, I appreciate it.
But Todd, for now, isn't it under conditional use? Isn't it covered under that?
That's not. What the council members referring to is the idea that we should create a process by which people who would like to install something like a solar panel, but would come into conflict with other rules in our code, like.
Yeah, like the parallel thing at the roof line.
Would get a simple special exception rather than a variance, and also to avoid.
I'm sorry. Yes, special exception.
And to avoid us having to rewrite the zoning code each time there's some new technology that needs to be accommodated. So, we're still working on that council member, but trying to find a place where we can all land so that we can make a strong recommendation to council.
All right. So no more questions, I think you have your path forward.
Do you want to hear a story about something?
You said you promised beer for the.
You know where to find me, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Todd.
Thanks Jen.
Let's thank Jim Spear. For doing his service as my commission.
All right. I am 7C Sustainability Team for Sustainable PA Platinum Certification.
Sure, so Amy R. Packet was a memo from my assistant, Michelle Carroll. She was largely working with our intern over the summer, responsible for, you know, moving forward our comp plan goal of achieving Sustainable PA certification. It's not just important for the comp plan, but in state grant applications nowadays, literally one of the questions is what level of PA sustainability certification do you have? So there's a financial impact to this as well. And so we were able to get up with everything the borough is currently doing, we were able to document enough points to get to a silver level of certification. I think we were just like a handful of things away from gold. The challenge of the program, as I experienced in my last job and here as well, to get Platinum certification under the old system, which we'll talk about the change in a minute, was pretty much impossible if you were a small municipality. You basically had to, you had to have an employee, you had to have a sustainability coordinator as an employee, you had to have resources committed solely to sustainability efforts. A small municipality just isn't going to be able to commit those kind of resources. So thankfully, the folks who run Sustainable PA, after having done this for a few years, you know, realized, oh, you know, all the people, you know, only municipalities who achieve Platinum are like Philly and Pittsburgh and like places like that. So, you know, we need to tweak the model here. So that was part of the reason as well why we went ahead and got the Silver certification, was because we were given a heads-up, they were going to be changing the system, basically everyone was going to have to start from scratch. So Michelle and I felt it was important to at least have, you know, something as we work on grants and things. So under the new system, there still is the point-based system, but they've tweaked how some of the point thresholds and things work to make them more achievable for smaller municipalities. And instead of solely relying on points, there's very specific actions you have to do in addition to a certain points score in order to get, in particular, gold or Platinum. So one of those components for Platinum certification is that the municipality does have to have a appointed sustainability team, you know, working on sustainability-related issues. Now, I think per Michelle's memo and per the information she got from Sustainable PA, it doesn't have to necessarily be a brand new sort of thing. You know, you could take an existing body like we have our, not to volunteer people here about giving them a heads-up, so that you have folks like the Environmental Advisory Council, for example, that could fulfill that role. Michelle, though, when I talked about, talked about it with her, you know, this is back as well, when we were talking about forming, like with the Master Park Plan, we had talked about the idea of forming a committee that was made of representatives of other committees. And, you know, back when we kind of developed this idea, we thought a similar model like that might potentially apply to this. However, I totally understand, given the conversation that we had, you know, regards to the Master Park Plan Committee, you know, how feasible or not right now that idea might be. But if the borough does want to pursue the Platinum certification per our comp and per the grant implications, we would need to have some body in the borough designated as our sustainability team. And also, the importance for Michelle and I with that as well, is there are certain things to get to the points score we need, that we do need to implement. And we'll need some body, you know, as we do have other borough policy ideas, to have those discussions with before they come to council. So that way council isn't being, you know, tasked and burdened with, at the table figuring those things out.
So we have a couple of decisions here. One is, do we proceed with setting up the sustainability team? And second, if we do, what's the composition? We're going to ask to put in, so.
Are there requirements for the team? Like they have to meet certain times a year, certain many times a year, or is there specific requirements for that team?
I don't believe so, it's out of my head. I do remember there were membership requirements that basically any borough body will fulfill, and that has to involve a resident, a staff member, and an appointed person. In the case of committees, and a lot of times those roles overlap, and that, you know, technically everyone on the committee is appointed, and borough staff are appointed, and someone who is on a borough committee is usually also a borough resident. So that's the main thing I remember. For a lot of this, Michelle is much more knowledgeable than I am, but that's what I remember.
Yeah, so you mentioned the EAC. I mean, should we think for a minute, would it be better to have this, have the EAC, ask the EAC to do that, or organize this whole group?
Yeah, I think that's the question for council. I think either approach is fine, especially if we're starting. I think, I think there are certain elements of sustainability that go beyond just environmental, that it wouldn't be, that we can expect the EAC to be able to contribute to necessarily. But I think, somewhat cynically, if our goal for now is to get the Platinum certification, probably the easier route to achieving that is to ask the EAC if they would be willing to be appointed in that role, and then the other gaps in sustainability, whether it's, for example, financial or some of the other components, you know, maybe just as needed, you know, like myself, or FNA, or, you know, whatever other relevant committee might, or Shaintree, maybe only those groups would only get involved for a particular topic where they would need to be weighing in on.
You could suggest that, you know, the EAC create a three-person subcommittee, similar to what we asked Parks and Rec, we're asking Parks and Rec to do, that will be our sustainability team.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, you know, that group has the expertise and the commitment, I think.
I think it's a good fit.
We'd have to talk, we'd have to.
know, members of Parks and Rec had capacity for it, but that's some of the other folks didn't. So it's aptly to your point.
Does anybody have any injections to the idea of sending this to the EAC? Okay. And are we going to, I guess it's up to you, you're on the office staff, is the official Carol wants to stay on?
Yeah, it was something I had a, had a talk with her about when she brought the idea to me is that I said to her, you know, just to be fair to you, what you're describing sounds like a pretty, you know, serious commitment on your part. And I want to make sure that you have the capacity, you know, if you're other duties to handle that. And she expressed an interest and enthusiasm and willingness to do it. So I told her, I said, okay, you know, it's part of the, you know, it's part of the borough's comp plan. It was labeled a high priority item even in the comp plan. So I told her, you know, as, as long as she's able to do the other task she needs to do in her job and is able to do work on this, then, you know, she would be the person who would be involved in it.
All right. And I know we have some choices to make as to which aspects we pursue of this. Hopefully, we can make sure we get the line for, before we try to tackle.
Yeah. Michelle provided the full list of like all the, all the things and yeah, that, that's exactly part of what, you know, she had talked about with me was hitting the easier things first. Again, our goal is not, I mean, want to be as sustainable as possible within realistic capacity, but, you know, the end goal here is to get the platinum certification and, you know, I think, I think getting that will fill the goals of council in the borough in terms of sustainability. And I don't think we, you know, need to get the points for every single possible thing you could do.
All right. I think council has consensus and you've got a path forward.
All right. I'll provide that direction to Michelle Carroll and ask her to make outreach to the EAC.
Yeah, I guess let us know what happens in the next couple of months. All right. 7D Personnel Manual on to you.
So in your packet is a pretty, a pretty thoroughly revamped personnel manual. I give a lot of thanks to the members of FNA for their preliminary work on this, especially Barbara Fortner, who has a huge helped me with it. I think there are one or two last comments, I apologize Barbara, that I think I did not have a chance to consider for implementation here. But I don't expect us tonight to actually be doing approval of a document like this. I didn't want to put council in that sort of position. My goal tonight was to solicit feedback, questions, concerns to council, gather those together and then depending on how widespread or involved those comments and questions are, as soon as your December business meeting, have like the final draft here consideration with a goal of implementation, Jan. 1. But, but obviously if there are questions and concerns, you know, again, you know, we'll, we'll implement whatever things need to be implemented.
Did anything come out of the FNA committee that they wanted council to look at?
I differ a little bit dissenting on that, but I don't, I don't think so. I think it was more just, again, just out of, you know, obviously respect for council as a focus ultimately, I have to approve it. I'm just really grateful to FNA for, you know, the, the faith and trust they put in me and Barbara in terms of putting this together. And there were good questions and comments from FNA, but I think, I think we have a document that I don't think there's anything in particular that there are any specific questions for council to consider with it. And, you know, part of the challenge for me in terms of explaining this document is that because it does, because so much of it is different than our previous personnel manual, and not different in terms of our actual policies, but I think the biggest thing that Barbara and I tried to bring to this was clearing up ambiguity in the personnel manual. And the other big thing is now that we're members of the Delaware Valley Property and Liability Trust, part of that and part of how they keep their rates where they do is all the members are expected to conform, you know, with the most up-to-date HR and risk control policies. And so a lot of those policies got implemented into this as well. So not, I mean, it's, a lot changed, but a lot didn't change in the sense that we brought a lot of specificity to existing borough policies and we incorporated a lot of things from DIVIT for short, that, you know, are required to be a number. But in terms of, you know, day-to-day borough operations, it doesn't substantially change that much.
All right. Questions from the, from council?
Fred, I just would also add, Samantha, you didn't mention this, but Solicitor Walco has looked at this already and, and provided some comments that were, you know, of that legal kind of nature that just hadn't occurred, hadn't occurred to me. But yeah, the, when I started looking at this, my biggest concern was that there were areas that were ambiguous where, you know, one person could say, well, this means X and somebody else could say it means Y. And so to just make sure that the document says exactly what we want it to, to mean and so that it's defensible then, when it's ever needed. And so to me, that, that's been the, the biggest thing that Samantha has brought to this is it's be usable that way, in a very good way.
So I did see, you know, in the discussion we had earlier, no smoking, no smoking and no vaping on any borough-owned property. Is it currently no vaping on the parks?
So currently in the parks, no tobacco products are allowed to be used by any one employee or member of the public. On this property, we don't have any regulations. And, and nothing new by borough property, you know, that would also include any borough-owned vehicles as well. I don't think we have any issue with that currently, but again, it's, it's just a good sort of housekeeping item to have.
You know, if one can be things other than tobacco. Do we need, I mean-
So the boroughs, we do have a very thorough thanks to DIVIT. What I would consider very thorough, one of the appendices is our drug and alcohol policy, and it actually covers situations like what you're describing.
I'm not sure if our parks sign is uncovered yet.
Sorry, what's that?
So that may be more restrictive on the parks than we currently have. If you say no tobacco in the parks.
Yeah, I'll double check with our resolution for the parks. We'll say if we need to change that, that's why we set it up as a ordinance referencing a resolution format where if we need to change it, it's not that difficult.
Can I ask any other comments? Thanks for, it's a lot, it's a lot there. And I know a lot of these situations have come up, you know, over the last year or so, where it's been ambiguous or, you know, we just don't have the policies in place. Be good to have this codified. Okay. EAC is our only action. Do you have payments for the Stormwater on Havford?
I move that council approve the revised final payment for Hamilton Contractors for Havford Stormwater Project Materials with a net cost of $56,506.58.
It's our second.
Second.
All right.
What, I've-
Remind the public what's up.
Oh, okay. So this is our final payment for the work that was done on Havford Avenue as noted here for the Stormwater project as calculated by the borough engineer as being the fair final payment as a result of additional materials and some scope changes that occurred with the project due to some conflicts of backtrack.
Complications that, that we found while doing, while the contractor was doing the project and told the broker, the contractor to change the project as a result? Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote on this revised final payment for Hamilton Contractors. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Committee reports. Infrastructure.
Can you say that again?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. The skate park, there was a conversation in Parks and Rec and a conversation with Jeff Eldon, and the recommendation is that we keep it open until the first big snowfall, at which point they'll put chains over the, over the equipment so that people don't climb over the fence and use it. And then Parks and Rec at a meeting, you know, early next year will discuss their recommendations on extending the pilot. Because when we talk about an opening date, well, I mean, that's not a foregone conclusion. Okay.
What's their definition on big snowfall?
As, as determined by Jeff Eldon.
Cleaning their parks is to actually snowblow.
Okay.
There's going to be a park users meeting on March 28th of next year to discuss the logistics of the, of the, of the parks, you know, for this year. It's not about like planning for, you know, the next 10 years, it's about this year. The bathroom cleaning, apparently the cleaner we've been using to clean the borough properties is going out of business and shutting down business in January, so we're looking for a new cleaner. Okay. The boiler replacement, investigation was done, the current boiler is a fairly standard piece of equipment that can be serviced for some years to come, so we're going to wait. We're suggesting that we wait on that until the electric heat pump technology improves. Okay. The park rental form is moving forward. I don't know when that's going to come through.
Yeah, the December, well, with permission from council leadership, it'll be on the December business meeting.
And then a decision, well, a recommendation was not to address the issue of renting the Sabine parking lot at this point, but we'll pick that up in the future because it's a complicated topic. And then we're also recommending a contract to examine the 80 Windsor Avenue West Ring Roof because apparently it, it, it needs to be inspected to see if the structure is in good shape. And the proposal was managed by a guy called Brian Cowles for $2500 to do that, and it's by someone who knows the roof. Okay. And then the sidewalk inspection program will be rolled out spring and summer.
So the park, park rental, are we going to set the fees for that with our like fee schedule?
Yeah. And that's, yeah, that's part of the draft fee schedule.
All right. Thanks, our Finance Administration.
Just another huge thank you to Barbara and Samantha. We're lucky to have their expertise to give us this employment manual. Think it, it's fair to those folks who work for us and it is going to reduce our time in executive sessions, which is, is the goal, is to eliminate those ambiguities. It's, it's going to save lots of folks time and money. So thank you to that. Adding on from last month's report, there's just really kind of three main bucket items FNA will be exploring. The first is we actually have received an email from a resident, who I want to identify them when I tell you more, where they said, not that I want another tax, however, I just learned about this tax in Evanston, Illinois. Wonder if it's something that we should explore here in Narberth, which really piggybacks to what we had talked about, looking, inviting a community member to look at progressive tax. So I thought, Samantha, I see your eyes rolling. Hang on, it's coming.
Sorry, the news about the Evanston thing started as new to me.
Oh, no. It just was interesting that essentially, community members kind of heed the call and said, oh, really, you're inviting perspectives on progressive taxing? Someone heard an email. So I thought I would, would suggest that that could be on our January agenda to look at when we, we have Dr. Lockwood come. The next is picking up actually on a project that started March of 2020 and looking at reoccurring users in the parks and playgrounds. Why this is under FNA is because there was really some question of, of who pays for what. And again, the word ambiguity kept continuing to pop up of, we have these fabulous programs in our buildings and in our parks, but where are the finances? Where is the administration of borough staff coming? So we'd like to, to gather that information. Some of that is initiated from our budget, let's say for the netting, really called to question again of what is, how are we paying for these things? Who should be paying? And then the next is really looking at communication yet again. Meet and greets were a bust, we laid them to rest. But FNA, I guess, in the next meeting is going to look at how can we, we utilize social media more strategically via the borough to highlight things that are happening in committees? So we will bring that all to you next month.
Okay. Public Health and Safety.
Okay. Yeah, we meet tomorrow at 8:00 AM and we will discuss a possible update to the Plastics ordinance that we've been discussing in committee in light of what some other municipalities have done since we did ours. So we're just discussing the possibility. Also, there's a suggestion to make some open learning regulations, but that's also just at the level of discussion. I, I asked Michelle Carroll if she could just review for the benefit of all of us in the public, how to file complaints through MICA because we've received many different complaints through email and it's just much easier for the staff to, to manage if everything comes through MICA. So for example, hazardous trees, rats, speeding complaints, anything like this can all go through MICA and we're going to review that tomorrow. So we also have an update from the Police Advisory Committee that we'll, we'll be in touch with them for the, early next year.
In terms of MICA, maybe once or twice a year, we could, we could post some pictures of, you know, public works hard at work on something and say, public works is fixing this. It was reported through MICA. If you need to report anything, do it through that. I, I enjoy seeing the photos that Jeff takes of the, all the projects, some of the projects that they work on. That might be a way to both show the borough work and also remind people of MICA's existence.
That's right. And it's Cindy's credit, you know, so some of the stuff that FNA is talking about, you know, the borough did a post that she inspired, which I think turned out really well with the Stormwater bump outs. So, yeah, I think, so my thanks to Cindy for that. And I think more stuff like that in the future will be really good for us.
So after Michelle gives the update on that and how to file complaints, I mean, maybe some consideration could be given to putting together a sort of visual guide that sort of shows people to screen the work, go to screenshots, because some people might have a hard time figuring out how to set up the accounts. I mean, I set one up, I remember it was like not totally obvious, where people were just like, should we do this or that? Maybe that. And then when people send email complaints, the first thing they can do is like, you know, without ignoring their issues, say, hey, you know, respond and then say, hey, how about if you didn't know how to set up a MICA complaint, you would get better responses or whatever, it helps us.
Yeah, that's a real definitely a good thing to talk about.
I think, I think it's, some people just don't have a setup, don't necess, you have to set up an account. I think some people, like you told, they don't, maybe easier for like, oh, I see how to do this. Yes.
Okay, thanks, Rob. At our parking.
The committee hasn't met since our update that, at the November 17th business meeting, we are meeting 8:00 AM Friday, December 9th, and we'll be talking about enforcement hours and other issues that we have to wrap this up.
Potentially your last meeting as a committee?
We haven't made that decision, but we're going to be talking about that. That's our, you know, we have to figure out, because there, there are going to be things that still need to be handled, so we need to figure out how we're going to do that. So we're going to be talking about that.
So what communication has been done? I mean, I know that the minutes of your prior meeting and certainly the minutes of the council meeting where it was-
That's our, you know, we have to figure out, because there, there are going to be things that still need to be handled, so we need to figure out how we're going to do that. So we're going to be talking about that.
All right.
So what communication has been done? I mean, I know that the minutes of your fire meeting and certainly the minutes of the council meeting where it was discussed have gone up, but has there been any communication to the people who are complaining, letting them know that these new things are being considered?
Well, sorry, but I made Barbara, and then you're welcome now. Thankfully, I think a good portion of these people came to the last parking committee meeting, and...
So the word is spread.
I, I, I hope so, but, yeah, we had, we had a sentence at the last parking committee meeting.
We got one email, but Barbara responded to that person and told them what happened, so.
It seems like there were some blocks where neighbors were, have been discussing this and they've been, they're keeping a very current on it, so I suspect they may have...
The volume of traffic seems to...
Yeah, so I'm hoping that people have heard that, that we've heard that. And we have, the proposal has been changed. If anybody hears differently, let us know. All right, thank you, Barbara. Are there any announcements for the good of council? Okay, before we adjourn, we will have an executive session afterwards to discuss a personnel matter related to the hiring of police personnel, a property matter related to the Borough 201 Sabine property, RDA contracts, related to the contract, and some matter related to a potential sale of borough property, not 201 Sabine. Anything else missing, Samantha? Wasn't on the agenda? Okay.
We'll be coming back.
We will not be coming, we will not be coming back after the executive session. So take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned? Okay, let's see the others.